We're good?
Yeah.
Okay, well, welcome, everybody. Tonight is the State of Bethel's monthly meeting. I'm Catherine Heber, the chairman, and our first agenda item is pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your head, indivisible, free, open, and conscious. Anybody write in or call you now? Okay, there's nobody here in the public. Okay, great. What's going on? Um, so I have a little bit of a chairman's report, not that long. So some of us went to the FOI training that the town had on February 5th, and it was very well done. The presenter was Russell Blair. He's Director of Education and Communication for FOIA. And he gave the training, and it was, I guess it was about an hour. Well, it was two hours, right? It was two hours, yeah, because a lot of questions. And like I was telling Gabriella, I said, I mean, I've been municipal government for a long time. Every time I go to one of these, I learn something new. So it's really important to be trained, retrained, and just read about it. And it was great that he had the training on YouTube, right?
Yes, on the municipal on Bethel Town website, or the town's YouTube. There we go.
Okay, so yeah, so if you ever want to look at it again, just as a refresher, that's another way to do it. And then I sent you out that he has some handsouts and summarizing some of the highlights. So that's important for all of us to understand how all the FOI works. I'm still working on the strategic plan. I will send that out to you hopefully by next week for our State of Bethel Commission. I talked to Dan about it, and I gave him what I had, but I want you all to look at it, and then we can, you know, talk about it. It will be most likely folded into the larger strategic plan for the town at some point. Um, the other thing that I wanted to talk about real quickly, and we can talk about it later as well, just to bring it up, and something that was, I thought about, and we had talked about it before, actually, was I want to continue to do the surveys, and I'm not sure how we can continue to do that. We had started those surveys a few years ago as a public engagement tool. And then because it was hard to access, and we, and people didn't understand how to fill it out. But I would like to try to continue that in some ways, just to continue to gather information related to the State of Bethel Commission. So that will need a little bit more conversation. Surveys capturing what specifically? Or just? Well, we want to, we want to hear from the, well, there's a couple of things. So there would be several, it could be several, but right now, because we're still trying to put this higher level plan together and working on certain specific projects related to like the Sustainable Connecticut Certification. We're working on an EV charging request for information, et cetera, et cetera. But again, it's just more, what, what does the public want? What do our residents want? What do the businesses want?
What we sort of did before.
Right, but I think we can, we can edit that and drill it down that where it makes sense. And it can be different ones at different times of the year. But I would like to, because it's another way to capture, you know, it's another engagement tool. And it's something that we need to know what's going on, and it's something that we can report out. So, yeah, if any of you are interested, think about it. Let me know as soon as possible to put that together. We'd have to put something on, a way to capture the information. Before it was through the town. Mary, I don't know if that's something, but we have to do a survey that is linked to the town, or can we do it and then get the information? And then, I'm not sure of the.
Yeah, I'm not sure either. I do know that the platform that we used, there was a cost to it.
Yeah.
And it was only a year's subscription, so that's obviously run out.
Right.
But I don't know moving forward.
Yeah, I think we want to find out, because I think it's a really good ongoing tool that we can post on our social media. We can post on the website, and people can just click. And it's just one small little tool, but I think it could be another way to reach people in addition to everything that we're doing, and then ultimately wanting to do some kind of public engagement in person. Okay, so yeah, if we can come out with what we have to do, that would be great. Um.
Sorry. Can I just say something quickly? If it doesn't, if it doesn't need to be through the town, Google Forms is a great free tool to use for that.
Right, just like we're doing with the volunteer and all the other stuff. So can you?
Yeah, we can make it look like anything. It's, we're writing the questions.
Right. So Mary, let us know, or let me know if we have to do it through this, the town system, or can we do our own and then report it out to Dan? Okay. The food scrap program, so I wanted to report on that because I've been talking to Tiffany Carlson, who was here last month. I had put her together with the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce has a weekly breakfast at Uncle Leo's. Sometimes they have it at Peace Deli on Tuesday mornings. And it's a good way for, it was a good way to get her there and talk to some of the businesses. So we were there this, yesterday morning at Uncle Leo's with about 10 different businesses that attended. It's early in the morning, 8:30 in the morning. And it was only, I said to her, I said, just do a 10-minute, you know, presentation, because everybody kind of likes to dialogue and engage. Well, it wound up to be 30 minutes. Everybody was very interested in the program. So that was another way to get the word out and another awareness. And she did tell me this morning that several people signed up today. And I don't know if it was because of that or because of something else, but it was kind of, who knows, right? She is also going to be at the library on March 14th. Usually their night meetings sessions are between like 6:00 and 7:00 or something like that at night. I don't know exactly when she's going to be there, but she's going to be giving, not only related to the food scrap program, but the entire trash talk presentation that she did for the town in 2023. I think it was the fall of 2023, related to materials handling, recycling, diverting waste into other systems. So that's on March 14th. The food scrap program is hovering around 200, 205 people right now that signed up. And it's, we started this in August, so it's been like a six-month program, which is actually pretty good. So again, it's something, you know, we're supporting. It's part of sustainability, and yes.
I just wanted to let you guys know that the flyers Tiffany left last time she was here. I managed to put some of them up around town in different community boards so that people are aware and learning and can click on to the link and learn more.
Thank you. So that's what's going on with that. And I believe that the town will be, the pilot ends soon, and we'll be sending out some type of letter of intent to make it a permanent program. So just, you know, that that's going on. I'm going to make, all right, I think that's it, because the other stuff is down on the, on the agenda later. Any other questions related to my report?
The letter of intent, is there, it should be like, support her in some way? Or the program, I mean?
Right, it has to come from the first electman. Yeah, but that's something that the town's going to do.
Yeah. No, no, I mean, in her, in the process of making it clear that the recommendation is to make the program permanent, is it something we can support?
Oh, we can, if that's what, yeah, I mean, we would want to support a program like that, right? Are there any comments about that?
Do certain number of people need to be signed up to?
There are, yeah, there are numbers that they are looking at that they use to get the initial grant. But that was to get the, that was used to get the initial grant. But they do want towns in the state of Connecticut to have, to continue the food scrap program, those who started with the pilot, for sure. Because that's helping to divert the waste and lower costs.
So maybe we could help with like what metrics they need to continue the program and helping them meet those metrics.
Yeah. It's a good idea.
Yeah, I think I just, you know, second what Gabriella said, like, is the town, or do we know in this letter coming from Dan? I mean, are we going to be working on it with him? We're going to be submitting our comments to him? Or is he just saying, give us the comments? I guess, is there kind of a communication between as far as how we see it?
All it is, is a desire to continue the program, basically.
Got it.
It's letter of intent is kind of like government speak.
So we're aware that he's in support of it, and that that's.
Absolutely, yes, he's definitely pushing this program, for sure. It, yeah. Does that make sense?
I'm confused. So is the letter to the first electman?
No.
Is it from the first electman?
It's from the first electman to the, to HRA and the state that this town wants to continue the program.
Okay. Okay, we can still support it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yes. Oh, sorry for the confusion.
No, it's all right. I, yeah. I agree that we should do what we can to help it along.
Anything else? Okay. Okay. So consideration of approval for the January 17, 2024 minutes. Do I hear a motion? So moved.
Second.
Second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Planning to make a report. Um, we're working on our, we're continuing to work. We have a meeting coming up on this next week where we will talk about where we are with the, with the various action items.
We have a number of things that we're waiting on information to get back from people. I know for a number of the things that I'm working on, from the Health Department, from the Building Department, a couple of other places. So we're, you know, we're moving ahead. We do want to be able to submit for our certification in August. So we will have to really do an assessment at this next meeting and say, okay, where are we at? And what kinds of things do we really need to push forward with? And try and make that, that agenda.
So, can I say something? So Gabriella was really nice enough to sit with me, and we uploaded the information I had to the application. It's not, once you do one, it's actually pretty easy. So I think you offer it to other people as well. We scheduled the Keeler Room at the library, and we sat there for about an hour and a half and did what we had to do. We looked at a whole bunch of other things, and we changed some language. So it was very helpful to do that. I know that, yes, the deadline is August 15th for the full submission. But if you recall, Sustainable Connecticut will evaluate what you have beforehand. So suggesting that, to the extent that we, that the planning committee can do that in advance, that would be awesome.
I was going to suggest that, too.
Yeah. So I, that's all I really want to say about that.
I'm going to do a walk audit.
Yeah. One, one other thing I was just going to say, which is that I'm hoping that we can go over what the assignments are with everybody and see if there's, if there's any issues with anything, or do we need to reconsider some of the elements that the action items that we were considering previously. So I know the food scrap program is a, is a big one, and we should be able to fill in on that as well as the walk audit coming up. And hopefully, maybe some things get done at birthday as well. That would be fantastic.
So the walk audit, Kelly and I went to go check out the, the route that we are going to focus on. So we landed on Stony Hill and Old Hollyvale as a major starting point. And then we're going to go all the way down to Stony Hill in the intersection of Weed Road. So it doesn't include everything we initially spoken about here at the meetings, but it does include a lot of it. And it's just the natural sort of end, how it all works out there. And so that's, we landed on that. We are still trying to solidify our check-in point where people can come and check in with us, get the, the walk audit itself, and sort of head off. I think it's necessary to have that, since we're going to require police and fire presence and everything like that. And Kelly can fill us in a little bit more about it after, but our initial thought was that Agricultural Center is sort of in the middle of everything, but that might not be available. So our backup idea that we landed on was there's an abandoned bank or an empty bank at the Bethel Shopping Plaza at the intersection of Stony Hill and Old Hollyvale that is empty and is sort of enclosed in its own little parking area. And there's a edge right in the corner where it looks like a little tiny park, where it could be visually appealing and sort of self-contained enough that it could be a potential backup spot. And we would have to then obviously ask permission to use that place and secure some bathrooms, probably the Big Y or something, since that make, that probably make the most sense if the Agricultural Center doesn't work out. And that's pretty much it right now. We're just trying to lock down that check-in point so that we can send out the flyer and one pager that we have to the surrounding businesses and get some, get some buzz going.
So what, what piece is missing to either confirm the agricultural center or not?
Sophie, you're saying, let me jump in here. Approval has been requested.
Okay.
Um, I still don't have a, you know, definitive. I checked in with them today to let them know what the meeting was, and I was hoping to have a response by tonight, but I need a little bit more time. So because there's a little bit of an issue, they definitely want to do it there on the property. And there is bathrooms, right, access to the buildings. We love the, you know, area for, you know, several different reasons. Working with another nonprofit, it's kind of tucked in. We got a parking lot, there's a couple of outbuildings, and most people know where it is. And it is smack right in the middle of, of the walk audit, the location. So, but because of the issues going on with that property, permission needed to be requested by Stony Hill Preserve. So that has been submitted. I, I gave the Ag Center the flyer, just so they know. They're, they're pretty hopeful that it'll be granted because it's a great collaboration opportunity. And to say no is almost like saying no to the town, you know, to the town. Like, no, we don't want to do this. So they're, they're feeling optimistic, they're very excited about it because they do want to participate with us in doing so. So I just don't have a definitive just yet. So we just need a little bit more time. Obviously, I'll press them as, you know, time goes on in the next week or so, because I know we need to, you know, define that address. But I agree with Gabriella, just glad that we have a Plan B in place. So we visualized it, and we know where we're going to jump next if, if need be. We jotted down and got the names of all the businesses. Gabrielle, I'm not sure if you got a chance to see it, but I got them all in last night, the business names and their addresses. So we have every single business that exists within that walking area is on a spreadsheet with the address. And Janice at, I'm sorry, what is her role again, Catherine?
Director of Economic Development.
There you go. Spoke to her, I ran into her, and she was excited to say, you know, whatever we can do to get you contacts for it. And she was excited that we would be able to give that information back to her as well, so she could have it. There is no Stony Hill Business Association that once existed that no longer is an existence. So we did get confirmation on that. A couple of questions that came up is, you know, do we add, when we reach out to these businesses, do we keep it kind of contained? Or do we give them, you know, a business opportunity at like a sponsorship table? Do we want to do that? Or keep it just with our one table in the Ag Center, which might be more, you know, certainly more contained? So that was one of the questions that, that came up as Gabrielle and I were, were talking.
So when you talk about sponsors, what?
I guess.
Do, did you what?
Well, again, we were just, you know, kind of throwing it out there. We didn't really have an answer, but sponsorship, whether it was sponsor the event, to be able to put up a sign or a table, more, more engagement with people that were coming. You know, we just didn't really answer that question. We wanted to bring it to this, to this meeting versus answering that question ourselves. So that, that was one. The other thing that we were talking about is how we're going to let the residents know, because there are a couple residential houses that are close by proximity on Old Hollyvale on the other side. And then the other question was, there are a handful of businesses just past the, just past Weed Road. And we want to think about, right, do we want to include them as well? And I think that, that was it. Some of the other points are just, you know, nothing that was important to bring up tonight, but yeah.
So relating to the sponsorship, I mean, there's going to be some expenses, I think. This is just stuff off the top of my head. I mean, if you, it depends on your, and the two of you, your bandwidth and who you get to help out, right? You could have T-shirts for people that walk, that participate. You could have snacks. And I'm just, again, me, if you want sponsorship, because there'll be expenses, then you were talking about a list of supplies, right? That could be, and then in turn, they would have their, a table in, at the Agricultural Center, that would be awesome. They could have something there with their sign and, right? Again, I'm just off the top of my head.
Yeah, we just wanted to bring it to the group to discuss it because we are going to be, there are numerous businesses in that area that we're reaching out to. So we just didn't know if that would be an opportunity, if it's something that we want to consider, or if we want to just keep it with the two, you know, with the Ag Center and this, and, and involve them as far as volunteering, or, you know, that sort of thing.
Are you going to have any signs that are directional signs or anything like that?
Um, I think it depends where we end up. But in my, the way I was thinking about it is that if we are on the corner of the major intersection in town, I think it can get busy and confusing as to what the purpose of the event is. So I think in terms of sponsorship, that's something that we can keep in mind.
Okay.
That being said, I think it's important to collaborate and have engagement with the surrounding businesses and for them to at least be aware and know and be on board. So I think it would depend on if these interests come from somebody, right? Because I, my intention with the flyer and the one, one pager is for the surrounding businesses, people that work there, people that frequent there, for them to know. And if it's something that they're interested in, whether they get a team together to represent like the restaurant they work at or the workers that work at a particular building, sure, cool. We can try to make something work. I think if it's sponsorship in terms of like, I will advertise so that you can have snacks, I, like, what is that bringing to the event itself? That's what, that's what I'm thinking about it, but I don't know. What do you, what do you guys think?
What if you could make it bring more people?
Yeah, I mean.
If you set up your star at the Agricultural Center, and the sponsors sit at the end with snacks and whatnot, and you have to get some paper and fill it out and hand it in at the end and get anything.
Oh, so that, we, there is an actual, like, toolkit flyer thing that they have to get through, that they're going to have to bring back?
You can only get snacks if you're wearing a T-shirt or something if you participated in the audit. I don't know if that would.
I don't know, I just feel like putting contingencies on participation doesn't incentivize.
It's not a real contingency. You just set it up that it naturally flows that way.
Oh, yeah, I'm not against having snacks.
It prevents people from coming in just for the snacks and not doing anything.
Yeah.
And it's a bonus for people that do want to do it.
I, I think it's an opportunity, there might be, there might be. And you guys need to talk this out a little more. An opportunity for the businesses also. I mean, they could give out some type of combat discount card to people who participate. I mean, again, in the, in the, in this effort of collaboration that we're all doing over here. So, you know, and, and the information that you do get from the audit as well is going to be important for them to, to have that. So anyway, you guys think about it. I think, you know, they're all, they're really good ideas as a way to engage all of the businesses there and to get more people to go to their businesses.
Yeah, hopefully, people are interested in wanting to do so and kick that off, you know?
Okay. So what's your, what's the next step? Besides the agriculture, you know, where you're going to meet?
Um, I have to get together, like, the materials needed.
I got to continue to fill in the contact names and phone numbers on the spreadsheet for when we're ready to send out the letter. We'll do it by email and make, potentially by mail. So I'll, I'll work with Janice on that and, and fill in some of those blanks in the interim while we're waiting for, again, approval. And I'll keep following up with them, with the Ag Center.
I might start trying to reach out to whoever manages the Bethel Shopping Plaza. Just because I was having trouble finding a specific name or a management company whose website actually works.
Maybe Janice has that, City Economic Development?
Yeah, she, she mentioned if we needed a contact at the Big Y, she'd be able to help us with that, Gabriella. So I think we'll have Janice maybe. We'll set up a time to, to meet with her if you and I want to, you know.
Okay.
Meet with her, follow, we'll even just do an email. Well, let's start with an email. She gave me her email, so I'll reach out to her and copy you, and we'll go from there.
Right.
So what's the route again?
The what? The route, what, what do you, what is the one? Stony Hill, Old Hollyvale, to Weed Street, Weed Road.
Right. So basically, if we're thinking about it going west to east, it would be Maplewood, which is directly across the street from Weed Road or Weed Street. Like you said, I don't remember what either. All the way east to Halandia. It'll end at Haland. And that ends up being Point Six. The only reason those businesses on Old Hollyvale is because that's a shopping plaza, and you'd get to it from Stony Hill. So we, and there, there's, you know, 180, 181, 182, right there. But it's all just within that shopping plaza to the side of Big Y. That's why they're all included, because there's about 10 of, you know, eight to 10 of them in there.
So with the walk audit, would you go down one street, cross over and go down the other? Or how, how would that work? Or you just go down one?
It, it would depend on the people who sign up to volunteer to perform the walk audit. They can choose a particular intersection or the entire thing. And they would indicate so on the volunteer form.
Right, and then they're checking the boxes, whether they want, that we should have like a lit crosswalk or a pedestrian signal or.
Yeah, right. And one of the other things that we're collecting is the information in terms of how are they doing this? Are they walking? Are they biking? Are they bringing a stroller? Are they on a walker, like in a wheelchair? All that stuff is also going to be.
Yeah, the part on Old Hollyvale is a very short piece. So it's the same, you can pull into Big Y. So say you're going north on Old Hollyvale, coming to Stony Hill. The, the piece that we're doing, you can take a right into the Big Y parking lot, take a left into this shopping plaza, which is only about two blocks to Stony Hill. So it's a real short piece, but because there's so many businesses and it includes Big Y, and there is a portion of a sidewalk right there, we thought it beneficial to, to include that. But it's not a real large piece on Old Hollyvale. Those businesses just happen to have Old Hollyvale as an address. But it's not a real big piece of road, if you will.
Okay, that's great. Yep. That's where we're at so far.
Um, I just want to also add that related to the Sustainable Connecticut Certification. If anybody else would like to help upload information into the application. Um, that would be really helpful to get this thing completed um really quickly. So what was that again? Oh, did anybody else other than who you have on your planning committee who would like to help upload information into the application, right? On the commission?
Well, uploading is one thing. Getting the information is something else. I mean, I think the upload is easy, but the data, I think it's more the collection of the data.
So I'll add that to my conversation.
Yeah.
Collecting the data and um uploading it to the application.
Because that's, that's the biggest.
Right, it is.
That's the biggest stumbling block at this point. It's really getting all the art pieces together to 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 write it up. I mean, once you've got it written up, you've got worksheets filled out and all of that. Submitting it, from what I understand, is not all that difficult.
No, it's just wording. It's wording. Yeah, it's formatting.
It's it's getting everything to that point. That's that's the work.
Right. And the information's there. The town has it. It's just a matter of getting with that, the person who has it and getting it from them.
Well, but do do understand some of the, when you're reading the detail as to what something is, what what we may think it is, that what it the action freedom is asking for, or maybe two very different things.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, affordable housing, for example, um, we do have we do have certain things that we've put in a piece about affordable housing, et cetera, et cetera. But in order to qualify for it, there's a whole bunch of other things that had to have been done. Which I have no idea if they were done or have not done or and trying to go back in time and say, did you have this kind of meeting and who was there and we need all the attendees and blah, blah, blah.
Right.
It's that level of minutia that is um
It's challenging.
Well, it's just.
It is.
Time consuming.
Yeah, it's time consuming.
It's time consuming.
So um but yeah. So anyone who wants to work on helping collect the data and 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 all that, yeah, definitely.
Thank you. Um, anything else related to the planning committee report, walk audit, Sustainable Connecticut Certification, any other questions, comments? Your your faculty. Your is coming in. No. We heard you before.
The video. Better now? Okay.
Oh, now we hear you.
Um, yeah, these, I always have trouble with my microphone on these headphones. Um, I keep trying. So Gabby, were you still thinking about um asking for a volunteer? Uh, a high school volunteer?
So I wanted to add, talk to you about that.
Yeah.
I I don't know if you saw, but I added in the games that I can manage to do out of my stuff. Um, and yeah, I, there's about six games that I think I have there so far, something like that. Um. Do we need less? Do we need more? I I feel like the what I have is plenty, but I don't know what you were looking for.
Are we talking, what are we?
I think I'm talking about the walk audit.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I thought you were talking about Earth Day.
No, she's not there yet.
Not yet.
Sorry, what on this?
So are you?
I have been like, what game?
We're playing against the walk audit game. I mean.
Okay, go ahead.
Are you still thinking you want to ask, like, find high school volunteers to help with the walk audit? Do you still want to post about that?
Yeah. Absolutely. Yes.
Okay.
Again, once we have the location set, it is like a go in terms of where we're posting, where we're sending it to, who we're talking about it. Like, yes, we're going to do all the things. Uh, Kelly had an idea about trying to get it into some uh, there's like a church nearby, uh.
A Walnut Hill.
And she was thinking that, oh, maybe we can get it in their newsletter, see if there's any interest from that congregation since it's right there, things like that. So once I have it all, I will definitely talk to you about. I I mean, I'm assuming I could just log in and start doing the the thing. So, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
May 18th. And then I, um, Katie, you were going to follow up with Kim. Um, yeah, that that would be helpful too. Um, in addition to posting on their volunteer um link. You know. What it said?
Earth Day.
Earth Day, right. But it 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 related to any vol, like, high school volunteers. Because you weren't talking to her anyway. That's what I was saying.
Yeah. I, yeah.
If there are high school volunteers, not only for Earth Day, but for this walk, while you're talking to her.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Yeah, because you have a relationship with her.
Okay.
All right, is there anything? We're still on the plank. Can we walk audit? Anything else? Okay, great. All right, let's move on to Commissioner's course. Um, all right, you're up, Katie. Now we're going to talk about Earth Day.
Yep. I did not see, Gabby, I did not see yet the games that you put in the spreadsheet. I need to take a look at the spreadsheet again, but six games, it sounds awesome. Um, and hopefully we could find some volunteers to to help with running them. Um.
It doesn't have to be.
I what?
It says it does not have to be all this. It's okay.
Well, if we can get enough volunteers, we can do all six. Um. Yeah, I, yeah, I reached. So I actually already reached out to Kim from the high school because nobody has expressed interest in the two volunteer postings for the high school. I posted one for marketing or like social media marketing outreach. And so that would be ongoing from now until the event. And then I posted for I I think for three or four volunteers for on the day. Those can, of course, I'm not really in a rush to get those filled. If they happen, they happen. But um, so I'm hoping Kim can kind of push it forward to other groups, the ROTC or other areas in the high school to see if anybody wants to be involved. Um, we've had I should have looked at how what the numbers were now, but we've had some um people fill out the volunteer or not the volunteer, the um oh my gosh, my mind's blinking. Um. The form for being involved, the involvement form, that's it. Uh, for Earth Day, so um we already have some traction, I guess, and I posted to all the social medias, media groups, Facebook groups and tab. I know Catherine, you were working on trying to get some more public postings done. Yeah. Yeah, so Rachel from Parks and Rec is going to be helping with reaching out to some companies nearby. I think she just goes door to door downtown. So I'm trying to get some more help from Janice uh with outreach to companies or more businesses in the area to see how, if or how they want to be involved. We have multiple ways they can be involved. They can donate for the raffle. Um, they can do something Earth Day themed at their um, at their business and we'll we will post about it and hopefully bring them more business. Um, or they can have a booth uh on the day at the event. So yeah, multiple ways. I think oh, I talked to a couple people from Bethel Land Trust or they're involved with Bethel Land Trust. Um, and one person, Nico, is really really interested in being involved, trying to coordinate a planting at McCowor Park. Um, we're still trying to figure out permission for that. And um I think we're going to have saplings donated so that maybe on the day we can hand saplings out to people. And Nico said he's happy to spend a few hours kind of talking to people if they want a sapling, telling them how to care for it. Um, that's it.
Great. What's going, what's going on? Um, any questions related to Earth Day? Any comments?
I do have questions about the actual planning of the games. I don't know. You want to talk about it now or later?
You can ask.
Um, so yeah, so for the saplings, I was thinking about a table that he could pass things out and somebody else could be there as well. Um. Was the invasive species making into tea also going to be a table? Is the landscaping of the invasive species something that's going to happen during Trash Palooza? Can it be at one of the sites of Trash Palooza? You know what I mean?
No, can you, sorry, can you explain?
The, one of the questions that came up in emailing with the Bethel Land Trust people um, was being, was educating people on invasive species and how to remove them and things like that. Something else that came up from that was physically removing invasive species that are around town. Um. Because it would be a great thing to do. Um, so I was thinking in order to make things happen logistically, that having a table with that information would make sense. And then potentially having the Trash Palooza cleanup sites also be these sites that have these invasive species so that during the trash collection, people can trash collect with them, those who are interested in taking care of invasive species, they can. Does that?
Yeah.
Make sense?
That's a good idea. Um, JD is the one, JD is um taking care of the Trash Palooza coordination. So maybe it means talking to him and seeing, I don't know how much bandwidth he has, but maybe he can work with somebody else at Bethel Land Trust. Mary Ann, I still haven't gotten her involved. She expressed interest in being involved. Um, maybe something that she could help with um building. Do you, do you want me to send an email to them?
Uh, whatever works. I
Another thought I had, you know, with the um Ag Extension Centers, their Master Gardeners Program is they work a lot on and and focus a lot on native species um, in the garden and they might already have educational information put together on invasive species. It's a big topic of conversation with the with the Master Gardeners Program in Fairfield County. Um, I can put you in touch with um Sandy Wilson, who is just a plethora of information um as well. I think I might have her email from last year's Earth Day, but I'll let you know if I don't.
Sure.
Sorry, just to clarify, am I sending out an email about it or are you?
No, I can send it out. I mean, if you can, if you want to, that'd be great. Or I can.
Whatever is most logistical, that makes sense. I don't care.
I think Katie, you volunteered.
Okay.
Just so you guys aren't going back and forth for the next 10 minutes.
Also for streamlining, lots of businesses or people can get confused when there's multiple people. So it might be best if, right, if you do it.
Um, I think it's a good idea. Um, it goes to supporting these type of programs and educating the public as to, you know, how to deal with it. Um, so, right. Is there anything else related to Earth Day?
Um, if you are going to reach out to Sandy Wilson, just a couple of other ideas. They also talk about invasive bugs um and other things like funguses or whatever. I don't know if that's a bit too much, but you're reaching out. I don't know if she's got other information and if you were, you know, going to be supplying that, if it's going to be an educational piece, um invasive bugs are as concerning as invasive, you know, species, but um so just additional information. If you're going to be talking with her. Ask if they want to be in at Earth Day. It'd be great to have them talking about it. I think that'd be a great idea. And and they have a ton of volunteers because they table at their community garden at the farmer's market every weekend. Um, and they have a lot of support and these are people who love to talk about this stuff. So um, and there they can offer, like they do soil samples and watering samples that's offered to the county. So I agree. I think it would be great to have them there. Um, and have their own table. So even better.
So can I throw a little something out there? Because I know um Dana's interested in the pollinator pathways and we talked about, I know you, Katie, too, and we've all talked about that. And my understanding now, I we all, I thought, and maybe a lot of us thought that that actually existed here in the town of Bethel. I know BLT is working on creating those type of programs. I originally thought the garden club did that, but apparently they don't. There is a regional um what's it, a club? What do they, is it a regional club, the, that's only a group? I don't, what? Yeah.
I think it's state.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure. So maybe that's something, we don't have to make a decision now. We don't even have to have a long conversation about it right this second. But in your side committee conversations, I think that's something just, it ties into this uh this whole conversation about um, you know, plantings and basic species and how we can connect all these groups who are doing, who want to do or are are planning on doing um, uh, pollinator pathways in town, because we talk about it all the time. Um, so I know you're, you would like to be involved with that, right?
From what I've seen so far, there's like the individual pollinator pathways that are associated with the larger group. And then each town in the state of Connecticut have their own like page dedicated to the pollinator pathways. So I reached out to see if we could set up a town page and what, like what's involved in that. Um, still waiting to hear back. But then, so we could go that route and we could look into like the individual actual gardens that could be classified as pollinator pathways.
Agreed. When you go to the website, Bethel's listed, but it doesn't highlight, so it doesn't have its own page. Um, and I've seen it other events that the Monarch Way Station, it's just, you know, similar, right? Trying to get you know, these pathways for monarch butterflies, oftentimes they love to give out seeds. So that might you know, be a nice, I know they do lots of tabling as well. There is a local representative here, I believe in 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 Newtown, not in Bethel, but she does the region. Um, and I've seen her presentations and her tabling and she's, she's quite good. But what they do is they they give out, um sorry, was I'm spacing on the milk, milkweed um plants or you know, saplings is another kind of giveaway thing that they can do because people can do that right in their yard.
So I, the reason I brought it up, other than I think it's something that we we need to support going forward and because we've talked about it for almost three years now and we all, I thought it was, it was already kind of being done, but um that the Earth Day is an opportunity to um showcase something is or or have someone who understands how that works to start that process and start that collaborative process. So so one of the things I thought to do, and one of my questions was going to be around budget, was to have people and children make seed balls so that they can toss wherever. Um, so if if there's a chance for people that know all sorts of information about all that and have experience and materials to make the seed balls, that would be great. Because my next question would have been, do we have budget? So we can do seed balls.
We do not have a budget. So it would be something that we would have to collaborate, have a partner and collaborate, and it would have to be sponsored in some way. So along those lines, if there, if there's a table with one of these groups. So along those lines, if there, if there's a table with one of these groups, maybe that's something, I think it's a great, I love the whole idea of that. Because they're wildflowers, right? Is that, yeah. I like that.
Yep. Gabby, and I also have the idea of doing no mo may signs.
Yep.
Which we'd also need to get sponsored as well, but it's in the, all in the same vein.
They're called seed balls? Yeah. Seed balls, seed balls.
I've made them, they're quite fun. We even put them on like a slingshot, you know, and we were in a field.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I threw them all on the hill behind the house, just because.
You do have to be really careful though, if you get like a quote unquote native mix. Three what's in it, they're not all actually native.
So I think that that's why it would be a great idea to have either one of these organizations that do that already.
Mm-hmm.
Or understand, or understand it and they can do it, yeah, right. Okay, I just threw it out, there is um, an opportunity because of Earth Day. You guys can figure that out later. Anything else, we're still on Earth Day. Okay. This is great, good. Okay, EV charging. Do you want to say anything?
You can say it, we spoke today, there's really no updates. It's still sitting on the boss's desk, the proverbial boss's desk. Um, and what we're looking for is not necessarily hardware. We're looking for a company organization to come in and help us solve and plan uh, EV charging. Don't just sell it, provide a solution.
Right, so we're, we're going to gather information for the first selectmen to make a decision and put together a short midterm, long term plan for the town related to EV charging, um, what we need now, what we will need as the town grows and down the road, what the technologies are. Um, and also a group that will help put together grant, grants for the grant opportunities, because now's the time. There's a lot of money out there for all of this. And also how this relates to our municipal fleet. And how we um, put together a plan to electrify the fleet as well. Uh, so. He's, um, once he gets the RFI back to us, then we can um, start putting that, those documents together and that information together for Dan. Any questions on the EV charging, comments? No? Um, solar, Sunny is in India right now. So she's not here. Um, she is working on, there's a couple of things that are going on right now related to solar. Um, there is, there is an interest from residents to install solar panels. Um, and uh, so she's putting together some language um, that would maybe, we'll see, get incorporated into our zoning regulations that will help people um, uh, in this way, as well as for um, new um, development. Uh, so she's working on that and some criteria related to installing solar. Um, I think, now, did you, um, I'm going backwards. Postgen, the, Katie, did, did you talk to them there? Are they going to have a, a table at the Earth Day? Katie?
Um, no, I heard, I heard. Um.
There was a.
No, I didn't. I did not.
She didn't reach out?
No, there was that email, I don't think anyone ever responded to it, the email that you sent out.
Yeah. Um, there is a group called Postgen, um, and they've been um, working with several municipalities in the state of Connecticut. There's no cost to the municipalities, there's really no cost to anyone. Their goal is to um, help residents in underserved areas in any municipality or not served to install solar on their homes in an effort to reduce their utility bills. Now, we know that the, the investment is pretty pricey. So they have um, some type of lease program. Their goal is not, their goal is totally to save them money. And so the lease payment would be less than what the utility um, bill would be. So in the end, your, your net would be, um, I'm being very simple here, would be a savings to your um, monthly utility bill. Um, they have been providing these services um, more and more all through the state of Connecticut. Actually, they're, they're, they're doing this all over the country. Um. So they wanted to know, it came from the first selectmen's office to me. Um, and I talked to Katie a little bit about it and then um, I put, I cannot remember the um, woman's name for the life of me, um, in touch with Katie, but she, uh, Postgen.
Susan.
Susan, I knew it was an S, see, look at that.
I actually just realized I need to send her over the um, the form. We said we'd send it over and it was ready, so.
Yeah, yeah, so they're just going to have a table at Earth Day. Um, and talk to people about the program. So it'll be, it'll be a really, you know, another way to get that information out. Another um, related to renewable energy, et cetera. Um. There is also, um, there was an energy audit, uh, energy plan that was done from the Energy Commission way back when, before the Sustainable Bethel Commission was created. And one of the phases of that um, plan was to um, not only expand the solar farm to other um, buildings, but to install a microgrid. It's a little challenging to do that, but that is something that's um, being talked about now. Um, it's uh, and there, there's a group, Bill Crady, if you recall.
Been talking about it for years.
I know, but he's really gone home about it now because it's finally, it's coming to light. And the state of Connecticut um, is very interested in creating those microgrids around the whole state. Um, they funded a study that was done by West Cog a year and a half ago that really highlighted the whole microgrid system. Um, so anyway, we're not anywhere near doing that now, but it's being advanced um, slowly because there's some challenges with that um, in different ways. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. Um. That's all I have on the solo. Is there anything else?
I have, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no. Are you good with everything on the pollinator?
One more thing to say about your seed balls. If you want to make like affordable seed balls, use like something like clover as your base, like you can get large quantities for cheap. It's nitrogen fixing, it's good for the environment, et cetera.
Do you mind making a list of recommended?
Natives.
Natives and soils and whatever you think would be best to use?
But if we have no budget. But I guess we can request it. Who? We can request it, but if there's a way to engage each other partners.
Yeah, yeah, so that was my next question. Who, who was the person we're supposed to talk to about seed balls? Was it the person Kelly suggested or was it? I'm confused.
I don't really know, I just, I went, there is um, for Monarch Watch, there is a Connecticut specific representative, she's in Westport. Um, so I have that site, that link and I'll send that to you, Katie. Or Gabrielle, you know, both. Just so you have it, her email is on there.
So maybe um, Dana and you, you guys can work together on the seed bomb. I mean, yeah, yeah, okay.
Um, the other question was logistical for Earth Day. Or is the plan to have sort of the organization tables around and then the kid games in the middle, kind of like how it was last year? Are we using both? I'm just trying to picture how much space I have for the things.
Oh, your games?
Yeah. There's an obstacle court, there's a toss, there's a sorting game. Like, we could do this, guys. We have lots of ideas.
There's a lot of room out there.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
Those side yards are great, they're kind of off the side if you need bigger areas, you know.
But there's, there is going to be music, right?
There's going to be music. Um, yeah, even last year, originally my plan was to use the right side of the gazebo. Like if you're looking at municipal center, um, for the games and then have the booths on the left side. We just didn't have enough booths last year, so hopefully if we can fill it up enough, we can have the games over on the other side. Um. I had one question, Catherine, you said that the, um, the garden club hasn't been doing pollinator pathways. I thought any town gardens that they had been taking care of, they were doing pollinator friendly plantings.
They're doing butterfly friendly, what they call butterfly friendly, which is under the Connecticut Garden Club Association designation. And they have a butterfly garden that's out at Pirloa Park.
Oh, it's open, wow, and a lot of construction.
But they don't have what is considered a pollinator pathway.
Oh, how it's defined.
Defined.
Okay, got it, got it.
It might be easy to get it like.
Pardon me?
I said it might be relatively easy to get something that's already kind of formalized, certified as a pollinator pathway.
If you want to work with them on that.
That'd be great. Yeah, do it, do it, yeah, yeah.
Do we want that town page with pollinator?
We do, if we, I mean, as long as we define it the way it is, it's a butterfly. But you know what, if somebody else would deal with the garden club, I would be thrilled.
The town page is something like we would set up, that's different from like certifying our pollinator gardens as pollinator gardens. Do we want the page?
I think having, if we have the page and we're working through the garden club, yes, because we're not creating the, the path to or partnering and collaborating with them or the BLT. Um.
I'm going to second that, I think we should. Bethel's listed, but it just doesn't come up, all the other towns.
Every town in Connecticut is listed. That's the way they built it. Every single town in Connecticut is there. If it is blue, they have a pollinator pathway. If it is black, they do not. So if you go down the list, you will see that's the way it's listed.
Right, right.
So yeah, if you, if you want to find out, there's two things besides the butterfly. One was the, pardon me, page and the other is existing. Yeah, and then talk to the garden pollinator paths. And then I guess, Kelly, you had, um, I don't know, Sandy Wilson, is that someone that would make sense to talk to, too?
Sure.
Related to this pollinator pathway?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure, you know, I mean, it's a great place to start. Um, but certainly talking to, for example, right, the monarch um, groups or the garden clubs and identifying, yeah, but I think Sandy Wilson would be a great person to bring into the conversation. Um, as we start to identify if they exist, where they exist and what opportunities we have in our town to build them, it's important.
Okay, Dana, if you want to help with Kelly to, you know.
Yeah, I can certainly work with you on that.
Okay, excellent. Um, so what, what else, Katie? Because you meant, was there something else related to the conversation? Pollinator pathways have become a thing now, which is good. That's great. And seed balls. Um, was there anything else related to that? Yeah, and again, I think talking about this and if there's a possibility to um, have something at, at the Earth Day event would be great. Because it's very educational and it'll let people know that, that, that it's available. Um, now, just does BLT do anything related to pollinator pathways or is that something that they want to do? Do we know?
They definitely do stuff on invasive species because they have resources on that.
Okay, so that it's related to the invasive species, but not, not necessarily creating pollinator pathways?
Not that I personally have seen.
Is that something that would be interested in a collaboration since we're now moving forward with this?
I don't see why not, I'm pretty sure that all the plantings and replantings that they have done have been with that sort of thinking.
Bethel Land Trust. Yeah. Because they're, just let me know and we'll, we'll put you in touch with all of them. They're great. That whole group. Um. Okay, so this is awesome. It's a good meeting. Stuff going on. Our little small but mighty commission. Um, okay, I don't have anything else, me. Um, well, I have a lot of stuff that's, that's, that's separate. Is there anything else from anybody else that you'd like to bring up? But anything? No?
No.
Okay, then. Well, thank you. Look at that, an hour. We're good. Thank you and we'll see you next time. Oh, what, right, we got to adjourn. I was just going to walk out the door, okay. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All favor? Thank you, everybody.
Take care, everybody. Bye-bye.
Okay. Live topics, lively conversations tonight, so that's great.